Welcome to today's city council meeting, today Monday, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, council member Casey. District two, council member Vera. District four, council member Martinez.
Present.
District three, vice mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation from Pastor Chris Henry, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and he is via Zoom. Well, she wrote, she wrote a different name. So Jim, can you hear us, sir?
Let's pray. Thank you, God, for our city. For those who serve us, for those who are our neighbors, for our local businesses, for the blessings that we have and the challenges we have. We do pray that you would bless the Love Series event coming up and the street fair coming up as well. Bless this meeting and all those who gather for it, and we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Okay. Today we have three proclamations and one presentation. The entire city council will go up to the podium. And today for the proclamations, we have, we'll begin with Manjit Doson, Doson. Series Garden Club, is she here? Doesn't look like she's here right now. We'll still go ahead and do that. Second will be the Love Series proclamation that will be mailed to them. And last but not least, the Cinco de Mayo proclamation, and Nelson Gomez will receive that one. So city council, if we can, please all go up there and we're going to do three proclamations. Start with the Cinco de Mayo proclamation being that Mr. Nelson is present. Welcome, everyone. Recognizing May fifth, two thousand and twenty four, in celebration of the Cinco de Mayo proclamation, whereas Cinco de Mayo is celebrated each year as a date of great importance by the Mexican and Mexican-American communities in our city and across the nation. And whereas the Cinco de Mayo holiday commemorates the victory of the Mexican army over the French army at the Battle of Mi Puebla in eighteen sixty-two. And whereas the city of Series is home to a significant Latino population who celebrate the Cinco de Mayo holiday. And whereas the Cinco de Mayo holiday is not only the commemoration of the route of the French troops at the town of Mi Puebla in Mexico, but is also a celebration of the virtues and individuals' courage and patriotism of all Mexicans and Mexican-Americans who have fought for freedom and independence against the foreign aggressors. As whereas Cinco de Mayo serves as a reminder that the foundation of the United States is built by people from many nations and diverse cultures who are willing to fight and die for freedom. Whereas Cinco de Mayo also serves as a reminder of those close families, cultures, spiritual and economic ties between the people of Mexico and the people of the United States. And whereas the city of Series recognizes strong commitment to continue the annual celebration as a united and committed community, celebrated by Mexican identity and promotes cultural awareness. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, mayor of the city of Series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, council member James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez hereby proclaim recognize May fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be a day of a celebration of Cinco de Mayo in the city of Series and encourage all of us to join in a celebration of recognizing this day in honor of our Mexican-American culture and heritage. Congratulations. Let's take a quick photo, then we're having to speak.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and city council, on behalf of SMBU, I want to thank the city of Series for this recognition. And we really invite everyone come to El Rematito City Market on fourth, we're going to have a celebration for Cinco de Mayo, and we're also going to have a parade on invite all of you to be present. Thank you very much for this award, this proclamation. It's very seriously, we in celebrate this every year, and this will be our fourteenth year as celebrating. You, the recipient of it. Thank you. Yes, I wanted to invite you, because council member, Dan Martinez will be the grand marshal for our parade on presenting this fourth.
Okay, moving on to the next one. Arbor Day in the city of Series. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in Nebraska with the planting of more than one million trees. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion and precarious topsoil by wind and water, lower heating and cooling cost. Moderate and temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitable for wild, for wildlife. Whereas trees are in a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fire, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are the joy and source, wonder, wonder and the renewal. And whereas the city of Series recognizes positive impacts of trees on the health and well-being of our community. And whereas Arbor Day is an opportunity to celebrate and teach present and future generations about the importance of living amongst healthy trees throughout the city of Series. And now therefore, I Javier Lopez, mayor of the city of Series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, council member James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel Martinez do hereby proclaim Arbor Day in the city of Series and encourages all citizens to support the efforts to care and plant trees to promote the well-being of our environment. Now I do recall that in two thousand and twenty, as we came in, we wound up rejoining Arbor Day, so I think that is that's a good thing to acknowledge that we continue that. Congratulations to everybody. For a hometown favorite here. Declaring April twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-four as Love Series. Whereas Love Series is a time where people of different backgrounds and ages from all around the community come together to serve the good of Series. And whereas the citywide volunteer day creates the opportunity to bring people together and create a difference in their community by serving in particular and substantial ways. Whereas volunteers days such as Love Series serves as a catalyst getting members of the community out in their city, allowing them to make connections with fellow volunteers and organizations they are serving. Installing love for their city and getting them excited about giving back to their community. And whereas on Saturday, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, hundreds of volunteers will come together to make a positive impact and difference in Series by effectively working together to improve their communities. And whereas Love Series is inspired by the love compassion where volunteers will serve their time sharing with their neighbors who may be a stranger or positively impact the lives in their community. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, mayor of the city of Series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, council member James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby proclaim April twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-four as Love Series Day in the city of Series and urge all citizens to show their support for this event. We will be at seven AM, I believe, at Whitmore Park, eight AM. I want to get you guys out there too early, eight AM at Whitmore Park this Saturday, so be there. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for everyone's patience. We do have one presentation. And this is the water, the wastewater treatment plant improvements presentation. Public Works Director Sam Royale will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight I would like to introduce Schneider Electric, who's going to be discussing or giving us some ideas about improving our wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So I'm going to have, I'm leaving it, giving it up to Moses with Schneider.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's great to be here again at the city of Series. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Moses Bishara. I am from Schneider Electric Sustainability Business, and I am here today with the rest of the team members, Jordan Lerner and Brian Pottinger. And we would like to thank you for having us here today, and really, it's, it's an honor for us to be here today presenting these proposed improvements for the wastewater treatment plant of the city of Series. We're going to run over a few slides here to explain the proposed improvements along with the associated benefits. However, before, before I start, I need to mention that these proposed improvements are the result and the harvest of the team effort that was done over the several few months between the city Series staff and the Schneider Electric team. So we would like to thank the team here. I always like to start with the why behind the project, right? As we can see here on the, on the first slide here, what's the why behind the project? There are three main drivers behind the why behind, behind the why for the project. Number one, economic development. So throughout the discussion with the city of Series staff, it was discovered that the current wastewater treatment plant for the city of Series is under capacity. Under capacity for even for the current, for the current needs for the wastewater coming from the city of Series. In addition, and more importantly, it could be also a limiting factor for the city of Series moving forward with any future development and future expansions. We, as, as we know, and as you know, the city is, the city of Series is planning, is in the planning phase for few developments coming up in the pipeline to add, you know, housing and new businesses, expanding the city of, expanding the city of Series, the operation. However, the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant could be a limiting factor to achieve, to achieve those goals. Not only that, the, the wastewater treatment plant within the city of Series could be also one of the highest contributing factor as far as costs. The second main driver for the improvements, next slide, please. The second, the second main driver is the regulations within the Central Valley area, which is enhancing clean water and the West and the Central Valley region. The third main driver behind the improvements or the proposed improvements is sustainability. Bringing sustainability, which comes naturally with the implementation of the proposed improvements such as water resiliency. And how, how nice to speak about sustainability on earth day to day. Next slide, please. What you can see on the screen here right now is an executive summary of, of the current financial situation of the wastewater treatment plant for the city of Series. So the city of Series current annual operation and maintenance cost is approximately six point six million, six point six million dollars. And we believe by implementing the new improvements, the city could save approximately around four million dollars annually on implementing the new proposed improvements. Next slide, please. This is the second slide of the executive summary that breaks down further the main or major expenses of the city of Series wastewater treatment plant. And as you can see, the major expenses are coming mainly from fees paid to other cities, neighboring cities to treat the city of Series wastewater treatment, to treat the wastewater of the city of Series. In addition, with the high energy and operational costs and some other expenses. Next slide, please. As far as project priorities, so the, the proposed improvements will focus on transforming the city of Series from a basic lagoon system for treatment into an advanced treatment system. Not only that, increasing the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant, therefore the city can accommodate the current wastewater that's generated by the city of Series in addition for future expansion for the city of Series. However, more importantly, this will, this will bring the city of Series to control its own destiny when it comes to treating its own wastewater. As we just mentioned, the city of Series depends on to other neighboring cities to treat its own wastewater. Next slide, please. On the next two slides, we're showing the, on this first slide here, we're showing the current state of the city of Series wastewater treatment plant. And as you can see, the city send the majority of the wastewater to other two cities, city of Terlak and city of Medesto. The rest of the water gets treated at the city of Series wastewater treatment plant. Of course, the water that gets conveyed to both neighbor cities gets treated there for, for a fee. Next slide, please. On this slide here, we're showing the desired future state for the wastewater treatment plant. After implementing the improvements or the proposed improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, it will achieve expanded capacity for the wastewater treatment plant at the city of Series. And it will control its own destiny. It will be independent from others to move forward with treating the current and future wastewater of the city of Series. Next slide, please. In addition to the wastewater process improvements, we're also proposing some improvements and implementation of renewable energy sources to the city of Series such as solar and renewable natural gas. These implementation of renewable energy sources will help in reducing the cost of rising energy within the whole, within the whole situation, as well as adding resiliency to the energy sources for the city of Series wastewater treatment plant. In addition, addressing the rising regulations here within the state of California when it comes to organic waste diversion and reduction electrification for for some, some of the vehicle fleets and other rising regulations when it comes to renewable energy and cleaner energy. Next slide, please. Following please. As a summary here, this is the summary slide, and as we, as we see and throughout the combined effort here, we think the proposed improvements will, will bring around eighty to ninety million dollars in life cycle savings with the city of Series by implementing these proposed improvement. Achieve economic development and put the city of Series on the path to control its own destiny when it comes to providing services and expansion with new developments. Next slide, please. This slide here, we're showing just the next steps. We're eager to start the next steps, working with the, the rest of the city of Series with the city staff here on starting further design detailing development of the, of the city of Series wastewater treatment plant and proposed improvements. And we're looking for each and every one of you guidance and, and feedback. We're, we're committed here together to keep the communication line open at each and every step of the way and to make impactful, a meaningful impact together here. Thank you. I'm open for any question.
Thank you. Council, do you guys have any questions? Rosalinda, I see your button has been pushed, but you didn't nod to me.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is a project of this size, about how long would it take for this to go from beginning to end? Because I know it's not going to be able to happen overnight.
That is correct. So it goes through two main phases, right? Two major phases, the design phase and then the construction phase. We're expecting the design phase could be somewhere between year, two year and a half in design and development. And afterwards, the construction phase probably somewhere between two to three years. So I would say from beginning, you know, from A to Z could be somewhere three to four years.
And then it would be able to accommodate future growth, such as what we're looking at West landing?
That is the goal of these proposed improvements to give the city of Series more as a modular system that can be always added on.
And would we also be looking at hiring locally if possible and bringing local jobs? Because I know we're kind of dealing with some layoffs in the community.
Absolutely, yes. So that's, that's on our mind. So yes, our goal and to bring in local labor as possible, right? To, to work and utilize local companies as, you know, as we can. But yes, that's a priority on our end as well with the communities that we work with.
Perfect. And then something of this size, I just wanted to confirm this would be capable at the current size that we have in the location would be possible?
Yes, correct. It will, the, the city currently have, have enough real estate that this project can be implemented on.
And would it also include any site improvements or location improvements as well?
Location improvements, as I just want to make sure I understand this correctly.
I believe, and I may be wrong, but I believe at some point we were looking at expanding Service Road, because this is where we're looking at Service and Morgan. Okay. And I didn't know if we were looking at implementing maybe the road widening at that time. No, no side. Okay. So that's why I was just wanting to make sure we weren't going to like mess up the roads and then leave them that way. Because that's kind of my polite way of making sure we weren't going to make a situation any more severe than it is now. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any further questions?
Any members of the public have any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
On Warren, city of Series. Question is, the terminology of life cycle. I don't know what life cycle might mean, but it was the life of this current plant. And there was no mention of what this project's going to cost, how it's going to be funded.
Yeah, thank you for your question. As far as life cycles, so life cycle as a industry standard goes somewhere between twenty to twenty-five years. That's industry standard when it comes to the wastewater. That's a life cycle. I think your next question about the funding and the cost for such a project, right? Correct. So as far as the cost for such a project, this high level state is very hard really to tell because there is still more development work that needs to be addressed, detailed design that needs to be addressed. That's why we go through two steps approach, right? The first step, which is the design, the design phase, assessing technology that can be utilized and all of this. That's the first step. From there, we will be able to assess more on how how much the project would, would be cost, would be costing here. As far as funding, you know, we're in discussion with the city of Series about the funding sources for the project. However, we help our you know, our client and partners on leveraging grants, federal grants, state grants that are available, you know, provided by the local or federal government. As, as I mentioned, it's sometimes like, it's very hard to tell because again, the, those are considered as a complex project. So it will be very hard to tell without having further detailed designs for the, for the plans. This is more as a high level findings that have been completed for the past few months. What? Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Moving on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six. For expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. We'll begin with in-person comments, and we do have a couple of yellow cards, and then we'll go out to the rest of the public. First person that I have here is Gavin Klein.
Good evening, Mayor of Mr. Vice Mayor, council member, city staff, community. Thank you, Gavin Klein, Congressman Duarte's office. Just want to give you a couple of quick updates. First, I want to say it was truly an honor to be there for the series state of the city to hear the great accomplishments that the city of Series has had in the future plans. It was great, great to be there and see everybody in attendance as well. And another, next thing is, last week, the House of Representatives worked on a couple of aid bills, and those aid bills were for Israel, the Indo-Pacific and Ukraine. Once next, I want to talk about the Careers Act that Congressman Duarte co-sponsored. Congressman Duarte is a proud co-sponsor of the Careers Act. What this bill does is allows the Secretary of Agriculture to allocate funds within the rural innovation stronger economy, the RISE grant program to support career pathway programs, industries or sector partnerships in key industry sectors, including public utilities, telecommunications, broadband, water, wastewater, disposal, electrical supply service, services, conservation practices and management, healthcare, childcare, manufacturer, agribusiness, and many other sectors. I mean, what the, the grants amounts are awarded competitively with a minimum of five hundred thousand with a maximum grant amount of two million to eligible entities. And the secretary has a flexibility to add additional sectors if a local workforce board deems that that sector is in high demand, and it requires the grant awardee to provide a report to the secretary on the activities funded with the, by the grant, including performance measures during the project period. And also, I look extremely forward to joining you all on Saturday for Love Series to come together as a community to beautify the city of Series. I look forward to seeing you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gavin. Next person is Justin Farkas.
All right, Mayor Lopez, city council, Series residents. My name is Justin Farkas, and I have the privilege of serving as a field representative for Assemblyman Juan Alanis. I'm here to share with you folks and update on the significant progress of legislation that Assemblyman Alanis has presented so far this year. But first, in a similar vein to my colleague from Congress, Gavin, with Congressman Duarte's office. We are just incredibly grateful for the work that has been done so far in the city of our, in, of Series since our tenure in office. Assemblyman Alanis is really grateful to be present at last week's State of the City and to hear of the accomplishments and positive outlook on the future of Series as a growing community. With that being said, getting to my, the legislative accomplishments that we've seen so far. As I've let you know, in the past, we've introduced twenty-six bills this year. Of those twenty-six bills, thirteen have made its way forward through the legislative process in one way or another. Two of those bills being in the Senate right now passed through the assembly. Another two are currently sitting on the assembly floor, waiting to be voted on by the greater body. And nine are being held in appropriations committee to determine the funding impact, the financial impact that the bills will have on the California budget. So moving forward, these legislative efforts are focused on several vital areas, including education improvements such as introducing new courses and enhancing parent communication, support for homeless youth and ensuring protections for minors in the entertainment industry, training and resources for public safety officials, tackling crime related to the resale of stolen goods and retail theft, creating greater transparency at the Department of State hospitals and the way they handle placing SVPs in our community or sexually violent. placing SVPs in our community or sexually violent predators, requiring aid verification on adult websites, protecting our kids from potential psychological harm of obscene materials that can be found online, and improving accessibility to prescription drug information. Assemblyman Alanis is deeply committed to addressing key issues that influence various aspects of our lives, from health and safety to education, public welfare. Thank you for your continued support as we push to pursue these initiatives.
Thank you very much. Destiny. I noticed that you didn't put the last name. How do you, how do you prefer?
Not used to the name change yet.
So then I'm gonna cross it out. I'm gonna say Destiny Condit. Thank you for joining us.
Had my name for 23 years. It's hard to let go of it. But hello, everybody. Previously Destiny Swarrett, now Destiny like I said, with Senator Alvaro Giloffish, just giving two updates as well on some legislation. And everybody already said it, but also emphasizing the importance of the state of the city. As a Series resident, loved being there. Always going to be biased when I say I love Series. My home, so seeing it grow from when I was elementary school to now, it's been a great privilege. In terms of legislation updates, the Senator is hosting a press conference. We've talked about SB 268 for a while. She will be doing a press conference in Sacramento, I'd say at 10 a.m. This event will highlight the importance of SB 268, a bill that proposes to make the rape of an intoxicated person a violent felony. During this press conference, you'll hear some powerful testimonials from some survivors, including survivors from Without Permission and other areas of the district. Also, I'll be having Assemblymember Alves speak, and then Senator will also be speaking. And this will be livestreamed on the Senator's Facebook page as well as Senate page. So we have shared all this information on our social media pages, on our Blas, and then if anybody of the public is interested to watch it live, I will be open to send that. And then I just wanted to remind everybody of our scholarships. We are promoting the Minerva Scholarship and the Latino Caucus Scholarship. Those ones each will be awarded. I believe it's about $2,000,000 for students who are entering college, trade school, or but not. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Tony Magrigal. Welcome. You got some flyers for us? Yeah, absolutely. Got enough for everybody?
I think I have one for each council member.
Thank you.
Manager, like five extra. On behalf of South Desto Business United, Day of the Child Committee, we would like to extend the invitation to the council, mayor, all the staff in the City of Series community to the, our annual Day of the Child event happening this Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the El Rematito Flea Market on Crow's Landing Road. This is also a love Desto event, so we do have a bunch of volunteers. We're actually open to signing up volunteers for this event. We will be giving away toys and a whole bunch of other children's activities, face painting, clown, you name it. And there's information on the flyer. And of course, the entire council is welcome to join us at this event. Should your calendar permit. I know that we're also asking you to come to the Cinco de Mayo parade the following weekend, so want you to as many of our events as you can. I'd like to introduce our committee co-chair, oh, sorry, our committee chair, Lorena Ochoa, who actually spearheaded this event on behalf of South Desto Business United. She's going to say everything in Spanish. And then after that, we have Series board member Cynthia Ruiz, who is going to let us know about a specific school that we adopted.
Muchas gracias. Es un orgullo para nuestra organización de comerciantes unidos del sur de Desto con sus siglas de civil seguir apoyando con eventos que unan y fortalezcan a nuestra comunidad. Estamos organizados para este sábado esperar a más de 200 niños en el rematito junto con toda su familia. Están todos invitados y seguiremos trabajando para que la comunidad siga unida con estos y más eventos. Gracias. Buenas tardes.
Thank you, Lorena. Well, I just wanted to add that we adopted Caswell Elementary, so they can be our chosen school. As we also choose a school for the Posadas. And these are free events through our nonprofit organization to bring culture to our area. And we're very proud to be a Board of Trustees of the Series Unified School District and be able to adopt Caswell Elementary. We'll be seeing kids that are TK and up to first grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to anybody else in person who did not have a yellow card would like to speak. Now's the time. See and none. Other period is now closed. Moving on to conflict of interest. Is there anybody that has a conflict of interest? Want to circle back. Was there any emails, by the way?
There were no emails.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled? Rose Linda?
I wanted to pull 10. Probably nine, sorry, nine and 10.
Mr. Casey?
Five and six.
Five and six. Any members of the public would like to pull an item? See and none. Coming back for a motion?
Make a motion to approve items one through four and seven through eight of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Hi.
Councilmember Vera?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number 10. Councilmember Rose Linda? We could, we can go in order. Mr. Casey, five?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, has to do with the abatement program that we kind of have in Series. So my question really goes to Chief our Chief and our Fire Chief. I'm a little concerned that one hand doesn't maybe know what the other hand's doing. So is there, is there a difference? My understanding is that Fire Department's in charge of weed abatement. Does that include the residential properties or just the commercial properties? And the real question is, is there any chance that we can clean up the Mitchell Road, the Whitmore Berndon area and all the, you know, before the may, may have that you know, so when people come into our city, they'll recognize that now how clean it could be. I know last year, the city employees did some cleaning so that the street there entrance would be, wouldn't be as bad as but that's really the reason, clarification of who's in charge of what. And is it possible that we could have Mitchell Road and Whitmore Road and Hatch Road, the property adjacent to the golf course? It's not in dispute about what it's going to be, but there's a lot of weeds there too. Thank you for listening.
Chief?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. To answer the question, the Fire Department takes care of the weed abatement, and it is starting as we speak. Try to predict when the rain's going to stop and the green grass starts to turn yellow. And then we contact both residential and commercial landowners to abate their properties. And we always send them a reminder to start off the year. If they don't take care of it, we will send them a notice, and then we'll have 10 days to clean their property. So we get everybody in the city, and I'm really happy with our response in the City of Series. Generally, I don't have to go to forest clean, or we don't have to go to forest clean on any of the properties. We usually get compliance 100% once we send them.
All right, Chief, I did ask Doug earlier that once you start sending out those notifications, just keep the council informed as you will always do with all the MST information.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to report a property, they can use the Ask Series app, and information gets to us.
Thank you. And the next question will probably go to, for the cleaning question he had, Sam? I know we've been having conversations about cleaning Series for a while, right? As always.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to go back to Mr. Casey. If I could sit down with you maybe later on tonight to give me the directions or the locations, because I was having a little bit of a hard time hearing you out. I think your mic was breaking out. So maybe at the end of the night, I could, I could, if you give me the list of the roads, I'll be more than happy to take care of it.
Councilmember, you okay with that? Says yes. Okay. I go back to the council, or actually, Rose Linda, was that for the other items, or was that? Yes, go ahead.
Move to approve number five.
He's actually gonna ask a question.
I guess mine goes back to, and I'm thinking it's the right area, is the bathrooms, because I live directly across from Strawberry Fields, and I see the bathrooms are not getting locked. Do we have a timeframe? Because I saw a couple nights there were, I think one night they didn't lock them at all. Another night they locked them, it was close to 1 o'clock in the morning. And I thought we had specific guidelines as to having, I don't understand the point of locking a bathroom at 1 or 2 o'clock in the morning if it's just going to be unlocked at 6 o'clock in the morning by city staff. So I thought we had a contract that had a little more details in there. If not, is it possible to get that adjusted since we are, I'm seeing vandalism in the report. I'm still seeing expenses for repairs to the park. I don't know if those two are related, but if they are, I think maybe we should work on addressing that now.
Councilvera, I believe our parks, the, there is rules to the parks, and they open dusted on. So that's, that's not because of the time-saving, maybe there's an issue with, with our security. I could definitely, I mean, if it's, if those doors are not being locked, that's, that's, that's a, that's a major concern. I get daily reports from our, our security company on exactly what they're doing to the parks, and I have records of every single night. So if there's any specific night that you, that you want to talk about, I'll be more than happy to provide you all the information. But it's a concern. Definitely, I mean, I'll bring it up to them.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I've had a couple of conversations with McCann, just he's easy to find, as good, which is, he appreciates that. But there are a couple of times where 1 o'clock in the morning, it's still not locked. So I don't understand the point of having security lock it. They're not going to lock it till just before it stops.
I'm gonna have facility double-check the locks to make sure that they're latching correctly. And I'll get back to you on that too.
Thank you.
I'll open this back to the public. Any members of the public would like to comment on item number five? See and none. I bring this item back to the council. Motion.
Move to accept item number five of the consent calendar?
Second. We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Hi.
Councilmember Vera?
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Casey, item number six.
Sure, and I should have asked the city manager before the meeting. I understand that we're going to be getting $325,000 to work on the project, and if we don't spend it all, we're going to give some back. What if it goes over? What if the project goes more than $325,000?
So the project's going to be closer to $1.2 million. This is just one asset of a different department paying us to make that fire tower a reality. So if what we're looking at, Chief Wyze might be able to explain a little more. But if we go over, then we'll give back some of the money, but it's mainly going to be seen to build the fire tower.
Counsel, any additional questions? Any members of the public have any questions? I'll bring this item back.
Move to accept item number six of the consent calendar?
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Rose Linda, item number nine.
Lord, okay, number nine, I know these are tentative numbers. I didn't know when we can expect finalized numbers. And then also regarding the last year's consortium monies. I know Turlock keeps saying they're going to put out RFPs for the money. Do we know about how much are we going to plan on putting in a request to use some of that money that's from the consortium that's left over? And then also following up regarding any public meetings regarding the use, because I only know the initial one, and I haven't really gotten any information about any future or current public meetings about how to even use this money, which is, I know, part of the agreement that's required by the government. I just wanted to find out about the public meetings. Do we have more scheduled? I don't know if members of the public have even been informed so they can attend.
Doug, or who's this? You?
This is me.
Okay.
This is Mayor and Councilwoman Vera. The, this is just an estimated funding. We don't know when we're going to get the allocation. But this is a process that the resolution to be signed in order for us to submit the application with the county. So that when fundings do come, then we can come back with a amendment to the funding. Public hearings were held on the 13th and Wednesday, April 3rd. Notices were in the Series Courier. There is not another public notice for the City of Series, but the county has a public notice, and they can go to the Board of Supervisors on April 30th. We will take any comments written or verbal from now until May 9th, and we will take those comments to the county. So they have up until May 9th for any public comments.
And have we heard anything? Are we planning on using any of the consortium money that is left over from last year? I believe there's a few million dollars that was left over that I think the RFPs were either put out or about to be put out. May not be right on the dollar amount, but I know we've been talking about it at the S H A meeting.
And that, I believe Anna is on. Assuming she's under county planning.
Anna, I went ahead and unmuted your mic.
Hello? Yes, thank you. Now, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So there is old consortium money, and it's approximately $10 to $11 million that the City of Turlock is still holding for the consortium. There is work to be developed. City of Turlock has, is agreeing to work with the county and the consortium members to put out a joint request for proposal. So our two-year allocation, the 1.7 from this current year and the upcoming one will be, we will work with the old money to put out a consortium RFP, a request for proposal. So we're hoping that because we're combining the money, it will give us more proposals from the outside. And we're working with Housing Tools, a housing consultant that will be helping us, is actually helping us drafted right now. And there'll be more opportunity for feedback from the consortium members. So again, it's still in the works. I know I kind of sound like a broken record from a few months ago, but we are making progress. But it's, we're hoping we can have something within a couple of months so we can be ready for when the allocation is finally out. And again, it's going to be a joint effort. And there will be more community meetings. And there will be more uh, community meetings.
Anna, is there a way you can make sure I get those? This is Rose.
Yes, yes, definitely. It, like I said, it will be going out for uh, feedback. Right now, I don't have much to give you except the tentative schedule, but um yeah, we, we will definitely uh, involve the consortium members and yes, a copy will be um, taken out for the uh, councils to see.
Perfect, thank you.
Any additional questions on item number nine? Any members of the public have any questions on item number nine? I'll bring this back to the council.
Make a motion to approve item number nine of the consent calendar?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number ten.
Okay, a couple of things on this. One, I noticed there were no grant allocations for this. Um, I didn't know if we were planning on integrating this with something else in the future. Is there a certain reason why we went with this versus maybe another opportunity that was available? Um, and then I noticed it was being used with ARPA funds and I don't recall that originally being approved. So I just wanted to kind of follow up on that if this is from the remainder and if that needed to go before full council prior to approval. Thank you.
So we are going, we're asking ARPA, we're using leftover ARPA funds from previous uh, projects, council had already been approved and now left over. So we're looking at this. This is a project that we're looking at that's you know, records over fifteen years old, having significant uh, problems and trying to make these work. They can move forward. What were your other questions?
I was just wondering about integration or upgrades. If there was a reason why we went with Motorola versus maybe another company and I, I just didn't know, especially if there's not any grants or discounts or something incentive that was being used. I was wondering why we went with Motorola versus something else that might have been, that was just my question.
It ties into the current system of the police department and the future design of what we're going to use for cameras. So it's all one big system eventually. This is just phase one of the project.
Okay, so it, it will integrate with future upgrades that police are looking at?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other members have any questions? Members of the public, any questions? I'll bring this back to the council.
I'm wishing to approve item ten resolution.
Second. Uh, Vice Mayor had it. Roll call.
Councilmember Martinez seconded, right?
Sure, yes, yes. I swear.
Either or, we both said it.
Yes.
You call, I'm calling vice.
For this. Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving down to any council member referrals for today? Seeing none. Moving on to reports. I have none, but Rose Linda has a ton. Rose Linda, go ahead.
I stay very, very busy in the good or the bad. Um, economic, uh, economic development, um, their colleagues this last week, so I met with both um, Ellen East and Avrato Gill's office. We discussed what other cities have been doing, um, what how cities are doing for affordable versus attainable housing, which is significantly different. Um, especially when it comes to my district, we also deal with urban sprawl since we are pretty much of still about fifty percent agricultural in my district. Uh, with the current prices and if homes were being built, how many locals would really be able to afford it? Is it really attainable for our current homes? Or are we just looking at bringing in outside residents into our community? So it's a large discussion that we ultimately need to have. Um, I'm also continuing to hear about continued layoffs and people looking for jobs. So together, we need to work together. I know we have our economic development Julie in here. Happy to kind of make that connection. I know he's working on the job fair as well, so I just want to make sure that you know, our local residents, especially those that are going through a transition right now um, can get connected to opportunities that we may have here in the community. Um, I'm also hearing about traffic issues. I know recently there was another major accident out by my house on Morgan and Hackett. Um, it resulted in traffic being stopped in all four directions. I spoke with a lot of residents that night because the road is blocked, so we kind of all parked in the school parking lot and kind of hung out for an hour or two because we had nowhere else to go because the roads were blocked. Um, but I think the result of that was just a reminder that we need to remain attentive. Because it looked like that was an inattentive and a lot of people were concerned about the medians. It does not look like it was related to the medians of those, not the lights. Um, it was more of um, just kind of making sure we're staying attentive and not being distracted. Um, if you do have traffic issues, um, please reach out. There's no way we can address those issues if I don't know where they're at. I know, especially with the warmer, warmer nights. I'm starting to hear a lot more of the street racing going on down on Morgan and Service. So if you guys are able to hear it, I know I'm able to hear it and I'm still up on Hackett, so we're dealing with almost a half mile, mile different way and I'm still able to hear it. So I know what's going on. But in order for us to be able to address that, we need to make sure the police department aware of it, so you're just telling your friend or your neighbor, that means our police department's not aware of it and they're not able to address it. So please reach out, reach out to me, email public comments, so that way we can deal with staff or call. Um, please reach out, because again, these are issues that we need to address. This is the safety of our public as well as our neighbors, our friends, our cats, our dogs. Everyone that's important to us, so it's important we deal with that. Um, in regards to SSLS Housing, um, their S H A, the Affordable Housing and Attainable Housing. We kind of discussed those, kind of played with words a little bit, because again, what we look at affordable housing, when I met with the state, the state, the average home is about a little over seven hundred thousand dollars a home. We consider SSLS County affordable because we're in the five hundred thousands, but that's really not attainable for our local residents. So it's something that we need to kind of work on. We need to talk about our rates, what, play with the wording, because attainable is different than affordable, because to the state, they see us as having affordable housing. Um, but with that said, um, I did meet with Ellen East's office when I was in Sacramento. Um, I'll be there again this week. Um, about having a town hall here, actually in Series, we're looking at July. Um, they haven't quite, quite finalized. I'm sure Joey will probably know before I do. Since he's probably going to be booking this hall sometime, to have this town hall to talk about affordable and um, attainable housing here in the valley. So I'm looking forward to having that meeting and I will continue to meet with his office to ensure that he does give us a call and get that booked. Um, and doesn't just talk to me about it. Um, this Wednesday, I know you probably heard Destiny earlier talking about SB two sixty-eight. Um, they are having a press conference this Wednesday at ten A M. In Sacramento, I will be present. Um, as a former victim myself, as well as someone else I know that was a friend of one of my children that was raped over the weekend in a similar situation, this touches home. This is a very serious incident, um, and I look forward to being there and bringing awareness to the community about how serious this is. This isn't something that I should be having to address. Um, and it isn't something that, you know, people should have that fear of. Next, actually, May ninth, I'm here at the Series Community Center, is going to be the Women's Mental Health Awareness. It is in Spanish, it is here at the community center, it is a free event and it's about bringing mental health and just awareness to women. They will be having free health checks and other information available. Um, so if you would like to come, please let me know. It is a free event. It is in Spanish. Um, but again, I want to make sure that everyone's aware of the mental health and making sure that we're all on that page, because again, we do see those issues here in the community. Um, I also met with T I D this week. I was at their board meeting on the sixteenth, had an opportunity to meet with our um district representative, um, and I look forward to having continued conversations with them. I know they're working with the city. Probably Sam, I'm guessing, uh, with making a new um hub here in Series. Off of Mofabably, we're putting new transmission lines, so we were kind of talking about future growth here. Um, I know we kind of briefly touched at the beginning regarding Love Series. If you have an opportunity, please come out to any of the projects or just come out and just do what you can. I'm not going to be able to stay the whole time because I do have a funeral to attend to out of, out of town. And then lastly, um, I know Ellen East's office isn't here anymore, but they are working on Prop forty-seven. I know I've gotten a couple of phone calls and text messages about the shoplifting, especially after the theft that we had at Walmart that did get a lot of attention. Um that's something that they're working on and addressing. Again, it was voted on by the voters. So again, it's very hard to change that immediately. So again, feel free to reach out. I can help get you connected in order to have all the things we need in place in order to give the police more resources when it comes to dealing with shoplifting here in the community. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. The Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I just wanted to congratulate you on another successful State of the City address.
Thank you.
Uh, I thank a lot of the people that showed up, a lot of the local uh, elected officials throughout the county and our, our US representatives as well. Uh, I also wanted to thank SNBU, South Minnesota Business United, uh, for inviting me to participate in their parade and choosing me as their grand marshal. It's truly an honor. I do appreciate that. Um, I did want to mention Love Series, but it sounds like Councilmember Vera already did that, so I won't have to mention that. Uh, and then one thing that she didn't touch on is uh we just recently had our post-Christmas tree lane uh, meeting with myself, Councilmember Vera and Officer Dave McCann. We were on it. A lot of members of the community that live in Christmas Tree Lane, they came out. They expressed some of their concerns and some of their gratitude, some of the things they felt worked and what they would like to see improved. Uh, we will be having another meeting with them, I believe around October time uh, at Smarina Park. We plan on having at the covered awning. I know it would be uh, mailed out to the members of Christmas Tree Lane. We're looking to get as much participation from the residents of that area uh, to, to hear their concerns and to try and improve what we did upon last year, uh, and make it another successful event, so thank you.
Thank you. Nubia? Anything?
Good eve, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, now I just wanted to check in and thank you all for your patience with me while I am away. Um, I have nothing to report tonight and I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the next council meeting in person.
Thank you, Nubia. Any of the department heads? Okay. Is uh, I don't think I see the county supervisor online. Anything, Doug? Okay. The closed session that was on the agenda is actually canceled. But I'll go ahead and read it because that is required and then we'll go for the public for any comments or questions. Closed session for a conference regarding labor's negotiating. California government code five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representatives are city manager Douglas D. Dunford and human resource director Lila Vasquez. Employees organizations are Series Police Association, first line supervisors, confidential bargaining group. Laborers International Union of the North America, Launa Mid Managers Bargaining Group. At public safety managers, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding this closed session? Seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned. God bless everyone.